Good evening. I'd like to bring the September meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors meeting to order. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Eckert? Mrs. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. De Batista?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mrs. Kuduski? Mr. Razzie?
Here.
Mrs. Holger?
Here. Mrs. Kuduski and Mr. Eckert are away on business. Could we have an invocation, please, Mrs. De Batista?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge. What is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
We will now have our reports from our student representatives. Abby Marolla, who was with us last year, and our new junior representative, Katie Receiver. Welcome, Katie.
Incoming students to the kindergarten academy attended orientation on August 19th and 20th. Students were able to watch a movie about bus safety and then take a ride on the bus. On August 11th and August 31st, newly registered students attended an orientation session while their parents met with Mrs. De Sanctis.
At Glen Olden School on August 31st, the teachers were excited to start the new year. On August 27th, the school ambassadors reviewed the responsibilities for the year. They seemed very eager to help with the upcoming school year.
In August, Prospect Park held sixth grade orientation.
At Norwood School on September 3rd, they held the sixth grade orientation. The students were given the opportunity to come in and go through a mock schedule and get familiar with their lockers. On September 8th, we held our first grade orientation. Parents and students met with the staff and were treated to snacks in the cafeteria.
We would like to thank the following people for their service over the years at Tenecum. Cookie McDermott and Linda Keller McKeller. We would also like to welcome Jenna Schneider and Amy Tompkins to our staff. We would like to wish Kristen DiMarco, Andrea Wilson, Jim Ryan, and Monica Greeney good luck on their new positions. Sixth grade orientation and first grade orientation went well. All students are excited and eager to start the school year.
At the high school, on August 13th, the marching band performed at the annual Ocean City Baby Parade. On August 27th, the marching band held its annual cookout hosted by the band boosters. It was a great night for everyone. On September 2nd, we welcomed the class of 2019. They were given a tour and treated to pizza. Please support the Ed Snyder 5K Walk on Saturday, September 19th at 8:00 a.m. at Norwood Park. This has concluded our report.
Thank you, ladies. You can be excused after our committee reports because I always forget to do that. Mrs. Riley, would you like to do the recognition for this evening? Thank you, Mrs. Holger. I am going to pass that over to Dr. Ekman at this time. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for coming out tonight. We have a special recognition ceremony. Our community libraries, as well as our community school libraries, joined together for a very educational and fun activity this summer, as you will see in the board report here, for a summer reading challenge. And I would like to introduce to you tonight Mr. Pat Quinn, who is a Prospect Park resident, who really took the lead in this project and helped to form a great partnership between the school and community. Mr. Quinn?
Thank you all. I thank you, board members. First, a real quick thank you to Bernadette Riley for pushing this the last two years. And Dr. Ekman and her staff really helped out a lot this summer and helped get the kids motivated. These types of things could not get done without our communities, our school board, and entire organization that make up all of our Interboro footprint. And I'd also like to mention that our home and schools, as well as our youth clubs, all got involved as well by challenging the kids during the summer to read. So again, I have to just stress the importance, our libraries, home and schools, youth clubs, and our school district itself. It's so important that we all work together. Now with that, unfortunately, we're going to have State Representative Nick Micorelli present the trophy tonight, but he's stuck in traffic on the way home from Harrisburg. So Amanda Black, who is his staffer, is going to present the trophy tonight. Amanda has also presented our trophy in May when the state representative was stuck in a budget meeting, so you all might get a chuckle out of that. So Amanda, why don't we come up and we'll do the trophy first, and then we'll present some folks. I'll read out what we're doing here, which is the Interboro School District Reading Competition, Reading for Fun. One thing I'd like to mention is we had 20,000 minutes logged this summer by the students in all four schools. So one school will win here tonight, but again, I have to stress the fact that all four schools participated, our libraries participated, and it's a win-win for everybody. The statistics I've seen have shown that kids who read for fun at grade school excel in high school. So by pushing this reading now, we're going to make our high schools better someday.
The winner is Tenecum Grade School.
So why don't we have our principal of Tenecum, Principal Tim Fanning, and Stephanie Farmer, who's our vice principal, and I'd like to add his staff. These two folks together, they won a Memorial Day Trophy back in June. Now, this second year in a row, Tenecum is just doing an outstanding job. Thank you. And Amanda has also had a certificate from our state house that you guys can mount on your wall successfully, next to the one from last year if I remember correctly, and that will stand proudly next to your Memorial Day Trophy. Why don't you guys sustain, you guys are going to do that. We also got lucky, and Vidian Chrysler Dodge Jeep gave us some money for prizes for the school libraries. So first prize goes to Tenecum, $100. The other three school libraries, each gets $50. I'd like to mention that Laurie Stolazzi, who is on the home and school of Glen Olden, very integral in getting this money out of Vidian, and not just for this, but Vidian's also given us money for our youth clubs in the past as well. You know, again, it's a win-win that our communities and our home and schools and our youth clubs all work together. So the other thing I'd like to do is bring up, though, our library directors from our free libraries. So Eileen Baker, can you come on up? And Cal Parsons, can you come up? Eileen is our director of Norwood. Cal is our director in Tenecum. And I'm not sure if Cynthia Long is here yet. Cynthia is going to be delayed, so hopefully she'll be here in the next minute when we get a picture of her. Again, the directors of the libraries jumped in on this, as well as our school district. Their question to me over and over again was, what more can we do? All summer long, they kept their libraries open. They got the kids to read the books and do the logs. Unfortunately, Prospect could not get involved due to some budget constraints, but their libraries were open for our regular summer reading program, so kudos to them as well. So what I'd like to do is give out first prize. And what I'd also like to do is call up the librarians for these schools, too. Lisa Saus from Tenecum. Lisa, come on up. Because again, this is not just the school libraries, you know, it's not just the free libraries, it's the school libraries, our libraries together. So why don't you come over here, Lisa? And also Margaret Gavario from Norwood, who's the reading director for Norwood. I'm not sure if Teresa Smith, come on up, Teresa. Teresa is our librarian from Glen Olden. I'm not sure if Matt Larson can make it tonight. Matt is our reading director for Prospect. The point of it, again, is that all these folks together make up the committee. Each year, we try to do more and more. Like I said, this year, we've got 20,000-plus minutes, which, you know, that's a great start. Next year, I hope we're going to triple or quadruple it. And can I get a picture? If you guys can get a picture. And why don't you get in the picture as well for me, Amanda? I turned my daughter into a photographer. She's a graduate of Interboro as well. Okay. Just to finish this up, again, I just want to thank the board. I have two daughters that got out of Interboro High School. Both went through the grade school system and the high school system. They did well because of the teachers, the administrators, and the school board. I know some of the school board members are leaving soon, and a new group will come in, but you guys set the bar high for all of us. I can tell you, I had a number of students at my house a couple of weeks ago before my younger daughter went back to school, and we were talking about some of the board members, and I'll just use Phyllis as an example. Phyllis showed up at every single event that I can remember for eight years. Fundraising, scholastic events, sport events, was always there. Brian Razzie, and Brian's stepping down. Brian sat here for how many years? Eight years, Brian, and was probably tortured through a lot of that. And you all, Brian also runs the youth clubs in Glen Olden. Again, I've seen Brian coach. I've seen him reach out to kids. This is what makes up our school board, our school district, probably one of the reasons why we have a sportsmanship award here. So it's all you. I just have to thank you all. You raised the bar, and I'm hoping next year, we're going to raise it even further. So thank you all again.
Mr. Quinn?
I just wanted to pull out the principals as well. Principal Danny Mills from Norwood. Just come on up here, Dan. Principal Rachel Lambert from Glen Olden. And Assistant Principal Mick Wood from Prospect Park. Again, this year coming up, we're going to challenge the kids even further, and we're going to just do more and more to try to get the kids to read more. It just starts here. It starts at our school district. It starts at our organizations. And I would just say that anybody out there, volunteers, all these different groups are always looking for volunteers. Just step up if you can. Okay? And I still have to give out these Glen Olden. Okay, again, everybody, thank you.
Mr. Quinn, on behalf of the board, I thank you for your efforts and for our local librarians, our school librarians, especially our children, for participating in this. It's great. Thank you so much. Can we move on to public comments? Mrs. De Batista, do we have any speakers?
Zerdi Dobi, Tenecum. Last month, I brought up the issue with the airport agreement and the amount of monies that you are giving away to an amount more than $800,000 every single year for the next 20 years. Since that, I made a write-to-know request about something from the school district. And I'm going to read to you what the response was in the letter that they sent to me. It says, "The request cannot be accomplished due to staffing limitations." Now, I did receive the information that I was seeking, but this is an example of your failure in addressing this issue by letting this amount of money go to the township in the county. Now, at the workshop meeting this past Monday, I asked you if you had received any notification about the payments, and you said that you had not had any contact from the airport. Is that still?
That's correct. Nothing official. In other words, we haven't received any notification from, I believe the city was the one that was going to release the check. We have not heard from them with any official communication.
Okay.
But we have been following up on it.
Well, I'm going to, last night, Tenecum Township held their commissioner's workshop meeting, and I asked them, and they said that they expect the check to be delivered to Tenecum Township by Friday. So by this time next month, the checks will be distributed. You will get an equal amount of more than $600,000 to each taxing body. And you will lose hundreds of thousands of dollars. The, I also brought up the issue of a property purchased by Tenecum Township. Again, last night at the meeting, they indicated that they are going to go forward with this purchase of a vacant property. And I expressed my concerns about it and that they shouldn't do it. But they said that they didn't, you know, they weren't too concerned. They didn't even have a reason for the purchase of this property. Now, they did say, when I brought up the issue of this money going to them instead it towards the education of the Interboro children, that President Gian Cristoforo said that since most of the money, or a majority of money, comes from Tenecum Township taxpayers, that they should be getting the money that should be coming for the education of the children. That's why they're getting an equal amount, rather than it being distributed according to the tax rate, which is why I'm bringing this up. Now, I find that interesting, that money should be going to Tenecum Township and had been diverted, and you, as a board, have done nothing to address the issue. So I'm asking you, again, to bring it up during old business, somebody, to address, whether you can have a, to just have a discussion about it, to address the issue. You know, this amount of money is significant. You, at the workshop meeting this past Monday, you were discussing the expenditure of $1,000 to attend Pennsylvania School Board Association meetings, and you said whether, should we be spending that kind of money? Well, had you got the amount that should have come to the school district, which is $1.4 million, you would have had more than ample enough money to address those concerns. So again, I ask you to address this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobi. Can we move on to motion five, please, Mrs. De Batista? 5.1.
Motion for appointment to serve as secretary pro temp for this meeting only.
I'd like to entertain any nominations from the board.
My nominee, Debbie.
Pardon me, Mrs. Floyd. I'd like to second the motion before we open up for nominations.
So we have a motion. It's been seconded. I guess, as a board, we need to approve the motion. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Call for nominations, Mrs. Floyd.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Debbie De Batista.
Any other nominations for the pro temp secretary? A motion to, I'd like to hear a motion to close nominations.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close, and all those in favor of Mrs. De Batista being president pro, I'm sorry, secretary pro temp for the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. De Batista. We're on page two for the minutes. Motion 6.1, please.
Motion that the following minutes of the regular meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors held on August 19th, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments by board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. The solicitor's report, Mrs. Sarini.
Thank you, Mrs. Holger. I'm pleased to report that today, Interboro School District hosted a roundtable for district administrators from seven neighboring school districts to meet and discuss legal issues and receive a legal update, which went very well. And in addition to that, our office has been consulting on policy matters, personnel issues, and also consulting on individual special education matters.
Thank you very much. Motion 8.1, or motion eight point one.
Motion that the attached treasures report for the month ending August 31st, 2015 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments on motion 8.1? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Motion 8.2, please.
Motion that fund disbursements in the amount of $7,275,427.71 be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7.1. Mrs. De Batista, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. We're going to move on to committee reports. I'll begin with our finance committee meeting that we held September 8th last Monday. What we did at the meeting is that we took a look at our end of the year, this last fiscal year that ended at the beginning, or the end of June, our budget to actual, and we looked at where we could monitor things, improve things. There are some things that are beyond our control, but nonetheless, I thought we did a fairly good job with the budget to actual for the entire year. Mr. High School, our business manager, provided an update from the state budget problem. We are monitoring that also. We are contemplating perhaps next month, depending upon when this budget is going to get settled, but we are looking at perhaps having a line of credit if we need it. I don't think anything is going to become dire straits for Interboro until we're well into November, if then. So we are preparing and are aware of what's going on at this date. We also are in the midst of our annual audit. The auditors will be in, I believe, this coming week, hopefully, to do their field work for our audit. So things are okay with our finances. I would like to ask Mr. Evans to give the GBO report. Mr. Evans?
Good evening. The GBO meeting convened immediately following the finance committee meeting. First topic was the Norwood Playground. Funds were raised by the Norwood Home and School Association. We would like to thank the Norwood Home and School for their multi-year fundraising efforts and are confident that the children of Norwood Elementary will get many years of use out of the playground structure. The playground is nearing completion, and a contractor had been hired to install the playground rather than utilize in-house construction forces for both safety and liability reasons. Second topic was curriculum and instruction. Dr. Ekman gave an expansive presentation on the current status of PSSAs, Keystone Exams, and Common Core-aligned subject matter, as well as forthcoming changes to the way schools, districts, and teachers are evaluated. Dr. Ekman also spoke regarding internal results of the previous year's testings and Interboro's progress towards state mandated goals and overall state averages. She cautioned us, however, that the PA State results have not yet been published, and our results are apt to change to some degree. As soon as the state's results become available, they will be presented to the community in an informational seminar that will also include the recent changes to the mandatory testing program. Third topic was policy review. Superintendent Riley went over the three policies that are currently being read and reviewed. 209.1, food and allergy management. 210, medications and the proper handling of same, especially at the high school level. And 916, school volunteers, as there are significant changes in volunteer requirements. Other notes from the meeting. Members of the board toured the schools to look over all the work that hadn't been accomplished during the summer break, including HVAC work at Prospect Park and the kindergarten academy, controlled access work, part of the Save Schools Initiative, civils and site work at the kindergarten academy and Prospect Park to improve traffic, parking, and recreational areas, new classroom repurpose areas throughout the district to improve teaching and learning atmosphere, tree trimming, concrete repairs, and new playground facilities. All members of the board were suitably impressed with all the work that was accomplished by the facility staff, and would like to thank Mr. Walhoff and his staff, as well as myriad contractors, for consistently churning out professional-grade work throughout the district. That's my report. Thank you. And if I could follow up, Delaware County Community College, there had been no meeting. The first meeting will be in October, and I'll have a report after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Floyd, legislative update, please.
Yes, our meeting last month was canceled because there really wasn't a lot to talk about because legislation was not in session, as well as the budget impasse, and there was no whole lot to talk about. I do have a report, and I'll read it real quick. A crisis is building in communities throughout our state as each day passes without a budget. Like floodwaters rising, an increasing number of districts are making plans to take on more debt to make payroll and pay bills as they continue to educate more than 1.8 million children in their local public schools. School districts have not received any funding from the state for the 2015-16 fiscal year. The number of school districts negatively impacted surged at the end of August, when more than $1 billion in state education funding normally paid to schools was missing. By October, school districts will be operating with a shortfall of more than $3 billion in state funding. A lot of the school districts throughout the state are, one of the ways they're addressing, Mrs. Holger mentioned about possibly going out for a line of credit or, you know, borrowing to be able to pay our bills if it goes past, or goes into November or past November. A lot of school districts are withholding payments to the cyber and charter schools because the penalty would be for not paying is not getting subsidy money. So since we're not getting subsidy money anyway, they feel we'll pay it when we get paid, and then the charter schools will have to go through financially what we're going through, and that'll be another avenue to put pressure on the legislators to get this budget done. And another thing is paysers, and how much of the paysers should be paid. So there are the three main options, borrowing, charter school, not paying their tuition money, and also the paysers not paying the full amount, paying some but not the full amount. So with that said, we're in trouble if they don't get this settled. So all the schools in Pennsylvania. It seems like bipartisan is very much necessary to get this done, and personalities should stay out of it, and party lines should stay out of it, and in this particular case, the children should be put first. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Floyd. Mr. Harris, the IU, please.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back. Hope you had a great summer. The Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors met on September 3rd. We approved a contract with the academy to provide program, culture, and climate specialists, approved to create a position for a new assistant business manager. We approved to renew a contract with Delaware County to provide internet access to the courthouse. We also approved to continue a contract with Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union. We approved a contract, approved to accept CCRE-S grant for the amount of $5,000 to purchase smart board for early intervention classrooms. Also, we are still, the board is still continuing first-round interviews for a new executive director. For more information and update news, go to www.dciu.org. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Harris. I also wanted to thank you for the time that you spent with looking for a new executive director. I know it's very time-consuming, and we appreciate your efforts on behalf of our board.
Thank you. Yeah, the one night, we spent till from 5:00 to 11:30 at night. So we're doing, really, we're really looking at the best interest for Interboro and the other school districts to find a great executive director, take over for Larry Dr. O'Shea. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can we move to motion 11, Mrs. De Batista?
Yes. Motion that the following personnel actions be approved, beginning on page two and ending on the top of, or halfway through page nine.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members on motion 11 for a person? It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members on motion eleven for personnel? Comment? Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, eleven point two, the nullifications. Um, it was, uh, brought to our attention, uh, yesterday afternoon that, um, there were some supplementals that were being, um, disbanded or changed. And, uh, they were supposed to be, in the, um, email that was sent out from, uh, Mrs. Riley, uh, one of them is still listed and it's not down for the nullification. And that would be the individual that's doing weight training out of season. That was one of them that was supposed to be, um, taken out. So, that seems to be missing.
Um, if I can just, uh, let you know, Mrs. Floyd, that position was vacant, which is why it's not listed.
Well, according to the supplemental contract of two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, that was given to me, the weight training out-of-season position does have a name listed. And, um, it's for the winter of fifteen and the spring of sixteen at a rate of two thousand and seventy-five dollars, so.
Um, I believe that individual resigned, but if we, uh, there's an error, we can correct it next month?
Okay, um, I'm disappointed that the board found out so late, uh, about these nullifications. Not all of them, but a couple of them, specifically the teams that are being, uh, done away with, such as the ninth grade baseball. Um, it, it's not that I disagree with what has been explained eventually. It's the fact that the board, this was supposed to have been, first we were told, the last few weeks it was discussed amongst the administration or the people involved in making the decision, and then we were told this was discussed for quite some time, but yet the board didn't find out about it until yesterday in an email. So, um, that's very disappointing. And the other thing is, as it was pointed out in another email, uh, from you, Mrs. Hager, in regards to explaining why the board doesn't have to give approval, uh, you, uh, made reference to, uh, when the adult education school was done away with and how the IEA.
Objection. Um, point of order, Mrs., uh,
Mr. Razzie.
President, I, I believe this item, uh, Mrs. Floyd is discussing her personnel, and are better suited, uh, for executive session, especially since we're talking about emails that are privileged, um, and classified as personnel-related.
Thank you, Mr. Razzie.
Excuse me, um, this is open information. Okay. All right. My question is, do we have an MOU from the IEA in regards to the changes with the supplementals as we have done in the past?
Mrs. Floyd, we don't need an MOU for this.
Why did we need one before? With sports, we're within our contract. We followed the contract. We've had discussions with the IEA. You're aware. We don't need an MOU for this.
We're supplementals. We do not need an MOU. In sports.
In the IEA.
It's part of the contract.
Not for sports, Mrs. Floyd. They're treated separately in the contract.
Any other board members have any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of motion eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, yes, I would like to, um,
Vote against it?
No, I'm voting for everything except for, wait a minute. Trying to find, there's so many personnel things here.
With the exception of eleven point two?
No, eleven point two obviously, um, is going to go through, and it's just a matter of the board not being knowledgeable of what was going on.
So, are you voting for the motion?
Uh, no, I'm trying to find the part of the motion that I'm not in favor with. Okay. Uh, I'm going to abstain on eleven point one one, for personal reasons.
Okay, so, motion passes six to one, uh, for motion eleven for eleven point one, and the rest of the motion, with the exception of eleven point one, passes, passes, um, seven to zero. So, the exception is made for Mrs. Floyd for eleven point one.
No, it's eleven point one one.
Eleven point one one.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I make a, uh, motion that we dismiss the, uh, student representatives?
Yes, I told them that they could, uh, they were dismissed after committee. That's fine. Thank you. We're on page nine, uh, for a motion twelve from the Office of Curriculum and Instruction. Mrs. DeBattista?
Motion that the following items be approved as listed. It's for the rest, uh, it's the last half of page nine and the top of page ten.
The motion's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven point zero. Motion thirteen, Mrs. DeBattista, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Special Education and People's Services be approved as listed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Are there questions or comments concerning motion thirteen? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Motion fourteen, please.
Motion that the following items from the Office of Facilities be approved as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Motion fifteen, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors cast their votes for the following two thousand and sixteen Pennsylvania School Board Association's列of candidates as follows: For President Mark B. Miller, Robert Schwartz, Vice President, Vice President, and Eastern at Large Representative Larry Feinberg.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? We need a roll call about Mrs. Caldwell, please.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Motion sixteen, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached invoice from PSBA for the Board Doc's renewal for the period of July first, two thousand and fifteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of two thousand dollar, two thousand and seven hundred dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Motion seventeen, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the attached agreement for professional Save School Services with Mr. Timothy A. Boyce for the period of July first, two thousand and fifteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen, not to exceed two thousand and five hundred dollars paid from district funds.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments?
Comment?
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes, I brought it up, uh, the other night. Uh, this starts July first, two thousand and fifteen, and, um, realistically, this should have been presented in June for us to approve to be effective July first. So, I just wanna make a notation that, um, we stay on top of these type of things and get them done in a timely fashion. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion seventeen passes seven to zero. Motion eighteen, please.
Motion to approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the local police departments from Glen Olden, Norwood, Prospect Park, and Tinnicum Township. The purpose of this memorandum is to establish procedures to be followed when certain specific incidents occur on school property, at any school-sponsored activity, or on any public conveyance providing transportation to or from a school or school-sponsored activity, including but not limited to a school bus.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members on motion eighteen? Hearing none. We need a roll call. Mrs. Caldwell, please.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Motion nineteen, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approves the Plan Con K forms for the General Obligation Bond Series Double A of two thousand and fifteen to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education for the full refund of General Obligation Bond Series Double A of two thousand and ten.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members on motion nineteen? Hearing none. Uh, we also need a roll call. Mrs. Caldwell, please.
Mrs. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBattista?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Razzie?
Yes.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes. Motion passes seven to zero. Motion twenty, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions of the following policies and categories of pupils and community as listed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment, um, that the state, uh, Pennsylvania in the last several years has imposed, um, more stringent regulation on our school volunteers, and so we are implementing, uh, this policy, uh, these new guidelines into our policy, so that is why it is revision. Any other questions or comments about motion twenty?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Motion twenty-one, please.
Motion that the Board of School Directors approve the first reading of the following po, uh, policy in the category of pupils.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments from board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Any old business? New business, and we'll go to our superintendent.
Thank you, Mrs. Hager. Uh, on behalf of the administration, I would like to welcome everyone back to the school year, especially our new families. I hope that everyone's year has gotten off to a good start. Uh, please check out the website and the calendars for our back-to-school nights that will be taking place over the next few weeks. In front of the stage here, you see, uh, a P.I.A. double A, uh, banner that we received today. This was, uh, based on the award that our high school received last year from the P.I.A. for sportsmanship. We're thrilled to receive this, and it will hang proudly in the high school gymnasium. This Saturday, September nineteenth, is Norwood Community Day and the Second Annual Edward J. Snyder Family Support Center 5K One Mile Walk. Uh, the ESJ Family Support Center is a nonprofit organization that services the Interboro School District community. Uh, the organization has successfully opened two after-school programs and is in the process of opening a third. It's provide critical service to our families in need around the community, and they are currently now looking to start a GED program here for our community. Uh, there's information on the back table. Hopefully, you're able to attend. If not, uh, a donation would be greatly appreciated as, again, this organization does, uh, support the Interboro School District. And finally, also on the back table, uh, is some information, uh, about a cyberbullying program that we will be having during the month of October. Uh, we have been working with Senator McGaragall's office and the DA to present this, uh, parent workshop on cyberbullying. Also presenting that night will be Dr. Merle Horowitz, the retired superintendent of Marble Newtown School District, who has co-authored a book on cyberbullying and bullying, and she's been studying this issue for quite a number of years. So, we're excited to have that. The district will be hosting that for everyone in the county, and we're looking forward to it. Also, just mark your calendars, that October twenty-fourth is going to be our bullying awareness walk, and more information to follow. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Riley. Um, any other comments from board members? Comment?
Mrs. Floyd? Yes, uh, I know Mr. Evans mentioned it, uh, in his report for the GBO, uh, about, uh, George Wahlhoff and his staff, and I just wanna piggyback or elaborate. He, Mr. Wahlhoff had an enormous, uh, plate to, uh, take care of for the summer, and he did an outstanding job, and, uh, the multimillion-dollar projects that he oversaw, and his staff were phenomenal. The buildings were ready. They're beautiful. Couple little things had to be finished up, but him and his staff should be commended on what a fantastic job they have done. Um, I also wanna, um, comment on my earlier comments about, uh, not being made aware. The board's the first to be blamed. The board is responsible or held liable for any decision-making that goes on in this district, but yet the board is the last to find out a lot of things. And, um, this can be, uh, argued back and forth, but the fact of the matter is, in the last several months, last-minute information is given to us that we have to vote on, and we weren't given the opportunity. For instance, when I said that something was missing, uh, or I was told that, you know, a position was vacant, we could have had this conversation. I wouldn't have to be sitting here making these comments now if we had the opportunity at work session to be given the information and talked about, talk about it. So, I just want people to realize, don't assume that the board knows everything because they don't necessarily do. And if you have a problem or a question, contact your board representative if you've already tried the school because we are here to represent you. We are your liaison, and you have every right, even though some people don't think, that as an employee or as a community member, a parent, that you should be talking to board members, but the fact is, that's what we're here for. We are here to represent everyone and to make sure that things are being done appropriately. It's called accountability. So, thank you.
Any other comments from board members?
Comment?
Mr. Razzie?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to thank the administration. Uh, less than two weeks ago, we had thirty-five hundred students come back, five buildings open, major projects that were done over the summer, hundreds of employees and faculty came back, and everything went off without a hitch. So, um, I just wanted to thank Mrs. Riley and the staff for welcoming all the kids back. I got nothing but compliments from everyone going to kindergarten for the first time and all the high school parents for the kids going to the high school for the first time. So, I just wanted to say thank you. You guys did a great job this year.
Thanks, Mr. Razzie. I certainly agree. And what I love about the Prospect Park project is that you can actually see an improvement. It's not like there's air conditioning units hidden, uh, in the classroom, so it looks great, and, uh, thank our staff for that. Any other questions or comments?
Comment?
Mr. Evans?
Just wanted to say that, uh, given all the activities and responsibilities surrounding the restart of school in September, uh, I feel that I've gotten all the information I need to act responsibly as a representative of the community, uh, on the school board. With all the day-to-day activities, uh, that we don't need to know about, our responsibility is to provide a framework for successful education. Uh, I think the staff, uh, and administration did a phenomenal job, uh, opening the schools and getting them ready for our children. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Evans. Anyone else? Hearing none. On Monday, October fifth, a finance committee meeting and a GBO meeting, uh, immediately following will be held at six PM in the boardroom of the administration building. Next work session of the Interboro School, uh, Board of School Directors will be convened in the boardroom of the administration building on Monday, October nineteenth, at six thirty, and the next regular 6:30, and the next regular monthly public meeting of Interboro Board of School Directors will be convened in the auditorium of the high school on Wednesday, October twenty-first, at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.